Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? We'll move that to the new business. Recognitions and acknowledgements. Always nice to have a lot, which we do again this one. We want to say congratulations to our RHS science teacher, Michelle Smith, for being selected to receive the University of Maine on Hope and Paper Foundation Teacher of the Year Award. This award recognizes excellence in math and science teacher. And our TRHS classes 23 graduate, Joseph Elliott, also former student representative to our school board, dominated Michelle for that honor. Congratulations, Michelle. Congratulations to Dia Thornton for winning the Butler Award for WNT girls' basketball. There is one male and female recognized from the whole conference, which is a senior award and takes into account basketball skill, team importance, leadership, and character. Congratulations to Alicia Starbird and Hesha Mason, who represented Reddyr Middle School in a girls' day at the state house. Congratulations to TRHS corps members, Matt Zenton, Jack DeRozier, Kayla Dyer, Audrey Frida, Kayla Massey, Brady Milton, Arlen Smith, Olivia Stoneman, Cheyenne Toak, and Sierra Toak, who joined high school singers from across the state of Maine to participate in the first annual Maine Secondary Oral Outreach Experience event that was hosted by University School of Performing Arts. Congratulations to our Optimist Club Student of the Month, Adult Education, Jadiya Childer. April 1st through the 5th is National Assistant Principal Education Week. We are lucky to have five of the absolute best. TRHS, Chad Peter, Elm Street, Lou Jackson, C.S., and now E. Vander, being a student at Reddyr Middle School, Hallie Adams, and Bella Wilkie from Iona Consolidated School. Congratulations to WNS Angela Gilbert for being named finalist for the Claudette and John Brazil Distinctive Vegetator Award in the Maine Council for English Language Arts. Congratulations to Alan Legavine for the Western Maine Conference Citizenship Award. Congratulations to Emma Martin for the Western Maine Conference Citizenship Award. Congratulations to LRTC medal winners from TRHS, Gold, Davos Hope, Lamont, Elise Gagnon, Asian Blake, Silver, Johnny Olte, Bronze, Isaac Sewell, Reagan Cohen, and Lee Thornton. Lots to celebrate. So we will start with some presentations. As you know, policy requires that out-of-state trips need to be approved by the board, so we have some of those to recap. But also appreciate always hearing about the opportunities that we're able to present to our students. It's Yarcee here. All right, for the national speech and debate team. Well, it looks like an exciting trip to Chicago.
Yes, my kind of town.
Vote early, vote often.
You found me out. What can I tell you? I keep sending out valid answers no matter what. I would make the reference that Daly and I were like this for most people, but remember who Daly was?
I don't.
I got some of these stapled, and I realized I should have done that. And now I realize some of them are not. So you guys get the stapled ones? Everyone just didn't have them?
Yeah, sure. That's okay.
Oh, that'd be great. I'll hold on to that. You have to go through and I agenda. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Todd, for doing that. All right, so we're very proud of the speech and debate team that we have here at Poland Regional High School. We've been working on that for a long time. Just about every year that we have had competition, or the team, 25 years actually. And I really still don't look like I'm 40. So, having said that, a little humor, huh? Don't worry on me. I am really pleased that, again, we are going to a national tournament, which really is exciting this year, is we're not only qualifying what we've been strongest in for a while, Duo and Drama Inter, but we actually have debaters this year, two debate teams that qualified to go. And so they've been working pretty hard, public forum debate and a policy debate. So that's very exciting for us. But Chicago is not in the state of Maine. I did pass geography. And so I'm really excited to take them there. There's a lot of fun things to do. It's a great educational opportunity, but it's also great because they will be competing against people from 50 states and territories. So we are planning to leave on Thursday so that we can get there. You know how you can trust planes to get delayed. But hopefully, we will be there on time, so we have a chance to do a little bit of sightseeing. We go to meetings and get orientated and practice with the other Maine students on Friday. And then Saturday and Sunday are days of competition, and we return on Monday. Online is Gino's Pizza, which is the best deep-dish pizza in the world, as I know, because I started going there before some of you might have been born. And, well, no. The big trick is always because it's in a fire, it's an old firehouse, right? And the deep dish pizza is like meal in a, oh my gosh, on a plate. And they have the best chocolate chip cookies ever, and also in a pizza pan. And then I tell the kids, they have to try to see if they can find my name on the wall, because I went there when I was a student. And they haven't yet found it, but a couple times we've gone, but it is there. I found it. So I know it's still there, several years ago. And we will be going to the Art Institute, which I think is wonderful. We will go to Soldier Field before they tear it down. But that is a historic, actually, football stadium, and it's kind of fun to tour it. And they actually are very happy to give us tours. If we're lucky, we'll get to see the Cubs or the White Sox play, so we'll cram a lot in there. But we will be competing, and I'm really excited to take them on this trip. We basically fundraise for the hotel. The school district covers the entry fee for the students, and parents cover the cost of the transportation or air flight. So, and then obviously pay for meals, et cetera. Okay, if they fundraise extra money, then this would be ambitious. Then, of course, we hope to defer costs like their dinner and things like that. So that's pretty much the presentation.
Well, this is entry fee, $6.75, that's for all of them?
Yes. Obviously, no, not for each one. Then I was in the wrong business if it was for each one. So, no, that is for all of them. But we have a pretty good group of representatives called Mutual High School. I think, other than taking Elizabeth, we're taking Math at anybody else. So that's, I'm pretty excited about that. Yeah.
Will the kids be just debating, or will they be giving speeches?
Okay, so I have two debate teams, the public forum and the policy team. And it's the first time we've had a policy debate team from Maine for 15 years, actually, I think. I'm sorry that Andrea is not here to speak for that, but she's gonna have, she said she'd come over and give some critiques to them. And then we have two duo teams, so they'll be doing short play presentations that they memorized and done caricature, and then a dramatic presentation. So they will be doing something very dramatic and heart-rendering. Usually very, you know, we'd be things, but that's what he wants to do. So that's what he's doing. That's what he won for, yeah.
Does this trip conflict with the senior class trip?
Yes, it does. It has in the past several years. But I do not make them go. They unfortunately life is choices, and they choose to go on this trip. So I think it was, you know, rafting versus Gino's Pizza and the Chicago Art Museum, and, you know.
Are they all seniors?
What? No. A couple of them are seniors, yes, but several of them are not. So, trust me, I did not twist their thumb. I totally understand it. But that happens, because we go every year this weekend.
Mike?
Make a motion. Can you make him a motion?
Second.
Second, any other questions? All those in favor? Anyone to vote? Thank you, Darke.
Thank you very much.
Providing that to them.
Yes. I will not sleep for several days. And we love parties.
Emma, would you like to talk to us about the Boston Aquarium trip for 10th and 11th grade?
I believe in the packet, there's probably an email that Mr. Martin sent, but he sent me here on his behalf, because he couldn't be here. So we're looking for approval to send about 40 students from 11th grade to Boston. It would be a whole-day trip. We'd leave at 7:30 and take a bus down, and we'd return around 4 o'clock at night. And we'd go to the Boston Aquarium. It would be students from upper-level science classes. So like, I take anatomy, so I'd be going, because that's typically a senior class, not a junior class. But AP Bio, AP Chem, Anatomy, Physics, Forensics, Geology, and Marine Bio, we'll all be going. We'll have four staff members going, so it's about like a 10 students to one staff member ratio. And we work really hard all year long, so they were just looking to get us out of state and kind of just give us a nice break, because the seniors leave, and so that's when coursework tends to lighten up for the juniors that are kind of smarter. You'll see that we start doing a little bit less. And then the school is going to pay for our transportation through our, like, trips fund, but students have to pay their own $17 for the aquarium. But the school and the staff are fully prepared to cover that as well if the students are not able to do that. But all we need is the approval to go to the aquarium.
So move, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mike. Any questions for the crowd? All right, all those in favor? Anyone to vote? That's unanimous. Thank you all. And to our next one, five and six have been eliminated. To Caitlin.
And what?
You have a duel. Duel.
I just need one moment. This is library? There we go. I apologize. I did bring my, so Mary, thank you for acknowledging our amazing dean of students. This is Kayla Wilkie, if you haven't met her yet. I invited her to join us because the bulk of what we're going to be presenting today for our MCS presentation is the work that we've done around BAR this year. And Kayla, as the dean of students, has been the one that's really taken the lead on much of the BAR initiatives. So I want to be able to have her here and acknowledge for her work. And I thank her for coming out at the end of a long day, because as you can see, she's about ready to pop with her twins. So as, if you've followed any of our elementary principals' reports this year, you've seen we've referenced a lot of the BAR implementation in each of the reports, but we wanted to be able to go a little bit more in-depth. So BAR is really, it uses eight key strategies for bringing the community together, for providing supports for students. And so these are the eight core key strategies. And just a little bit of information of how we implement that in our own school. So as you can see, the first one is a focus on students. So we do look at both the academic and the social, emotional well-being of each of our students. And we also explore students' relationships with staff, any connections that they have within the school. And we really look for ways to use any of the students' strengths in developing any plans when we have students that might need to work on anything. The second one that you'll see is it provides professional development for staff members. We did, if you remember, start the year with some additional PD days with our staff, and that was all centered around training, the people from BAR coming and training our staff on implementation of BAR. You can see the third one is it uses an I-time. Well, at the elementary school, it's called U-time curriculum that is really community-building curriculum for students. We do it weekly. We do ours on Wednesday, and our staff is all involved. You can see that it creates cohorts of students. And unlike the middle school and high school, our student cohorts are really based off of their classrooms with their classroom teacher. They do hold regular meetings with the cohort of teacher teams. We will go into those a little bit more, but those include what we call small block, big block, and community connect meetings. We do conduct risk review meetings, so we review risks of students and plan ways to support them. It doesn't fall, include family engagement and engagement with the administrators. And certainly, at our school, while Kayla takes the lead, she and I have been doing the work together. And certainly, we've had lots of conversations, even as an A-team, about the implementation of BAR. So that goes across as well. So here's some of the regular meetings that we have. So just as Caitlin was saying, we have small block meetings, big block meetings, and then community connect meetings, which all kind of unfold from the small block meeting going to the big block meeting if we need to talk a little bit more about the student, and then community connect if we need to talk about them on a weekly basis. But small block meetings, we were actually fortunate enough to be able to meet on every single student at the beginning of the year. And the teachers quickly did a rating on them for their academics and SEL, in their SEL level. A level zero, they would be thriving. A level one would mean like, we need to do some teacher intervention here. A level two is, we need to get some other staff members involved to really be able to help the students and get them where they need to be. And then a level three is when we bring those students to community connect and meet with, meet on them for a regular basis. But specifically in small block meetings, we start with sharing success stories. So we start with student strength-based. We talk about all of the great things that the students are doing. So you can see in that example right there, that student is observant. They're particular, they're happy, they're independent, they're helpful. You can, the teacher will update the U-time section, so they might provide some more information there. We will conduct a risk review and then create some student goals from there at that level one for that student. As Kayla mentioned, there are times that, you know, if a student is, and I'll flip back, you can see there is the rating scale over there. So the yellow means that they're doing the problem-solving at like the grade level tier. If it goes to a level two, then that's typically when it goes to a big block, and then level three is community connect. So this is what our big block meetings look like. It involves the classroom teachers there, but it also includes the dean of students, our school counselor, our social worker, our academic interventionist. There is a special ed representative on there. I also, I did put my name, I did put my role on there, but I am there as well. And we, as a team, we do share success stories. So as we are looking back at students that we have previously met on, we share successes that we're seeing with those students. We review any of the tasks or action items that we have to make sure that nothing fell through the cracks. We provide any updates from the community connect team if it applies to students that we've seen through big block. And then we problem-solve and develop goals and strategies to address any of the needs of the students that are those level-two students. And so far this year in big block, we have met and developed goals and plans and support for 68 students. All right, and speaking on community connect, so the people who are involved are the dean of students. We also have Caitlin there. I don't think she put her name down there, but she is there every single week. We meet every week on Wednesday. The school counselor is there, the school social worker is there, the district SEL dean, and she's also our district bar coordinator. And then the school nurse is there. We all get together and we share success stories of students who have been on community connect that are doing really, really well, plans that we might have put in place that are successful. We conduct a student review on any new students. We also try to add any new students to the school to community connect right away, to just keep a closer eye on those students if they need resources through the school or different things like that. And then we go through our list. So we have a list of active students that we check in with the teachers on a weekly basis and make sure that the plans that they have in place are working. And then we also check on our monitored students and as-needed students. And then we problem solve, excuse me, community connect students as necessary and continue to develop goals and strategies to continue to support those students. And then with that information, we report that back to our block meetings. And then from there, we will move any students. So we're realizing that some of the monitoring students need to go back to active, we'll move students depending upon their needs. So so far, we've met on 18 students this year, which is a decent amount. And a lot of these students are really students who may need connections outside of just even the school. So that's where the community connect comes in. So maybe there is some health needs that they need support connecting with a mental health provider or whatnot in the community. Or maybe they need, maybe they access our backpack program, but there's a larger need than just that. So a lot of the times, it is stuff that really would typically go beyond what our school community would normally look at.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Is that why the school nurse is involved on the community level?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, and she also, you know, a lot of, a lot of the times, we also look at attendance. That's one of the things that maybe isn't super captured there, but she often is the one that holds a lot of the information as to like, is there really some more serious, like, health concerns and whatnot? Yeah.
Thank you.
So one of the big things that you heard us talk about is U-time activities. So again, this is a community-building time that we hold year-end dear to our heart every week. So every class participates in U-time activities. And so I have a couple just examples for you. Here is one of the U-time activities, which is a rainbow in someone's cloud. So these are our first-grade students. So someone's having a cloudy day, what can you do to be a rainbow in their day? And so you can see, play with them, offer to help, be respectful. So these are all things that they're coming up with of ways that they could help someone if they were having a cloudy day in order to be their rainbow. Here is another activity that they do pretty early on in the year. It's My Family Shield. And it just allows them to identify who's in their family, what are some special things that their family does together, what's their family's favorite meal, what's a place that I'd like to go to with my family. And it just allows them to be able to see some of the similarities that they have with one another, and also be able to ask each other about some of those special things, like, oh, I've never been there, tell me about it. So it helps to open up some of those conversations. Here's another one. It's I Like Me. And here is where some of our younger readers students are showing all of the amazing things about themselves that make them special. And then this is an example from our older students. So this is Increasing Your Positive Talk. And these are, this allows them to really think about all of the great things about themselves and what their strengths are. So that's just an example of some of them. All right, and we figured we would share a U-time with you all that you could participate in, because once a teacher, always a teacher at heart, right? So lollipop moments. The students loved this one. I think the staff loved, staff loved this one as well, just because it allowed our staff to hear some appreciation from the student. Our door was filled with lollipop moments, so we enjoyed it as well. But a lollipop moment really is just about finding either that aha moment or that gratitude moment with someone that you haven't been able to share. Would you like to do one?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. And just thinking of someone who deserves that gratitude that may not have it. And if there's any staff members that you would like to give a lollipop moment to within the district, we'll make sure to get them their lollipop moment. And then, of course, another big component of BAR is engaging with the community. And so we wanted to share some ways that we have been able to do that using BAR this year at MCS. So here are some ways that we have tried to share this information out to you and to the rest of the community. At the beginning of the year, when we did our Fall Student Life Conferences, students were able to share their families, what their favorite U-time was at that, at that point in the year. If you ask them today, they might have a different response, because they have had much more experience with it since then. We do send out, there is in our family newsletter, we do have a regular spot in our newsletter for U-time activity updates. We showcase classes participating in U-times on our Facebook page. As you know, we provide monthly updates to the school board through our principals' report. We did a presentation with our Minute Community Club, which is our parent group, on BAR so that they would understand it and be able to see some of the positives that are coming out of it. And we also provided an opportunity for parents to participate in a U-time activity when they came in for spring-led, spring student-led conferences. So where, we've done a lot in this area. We're pretty proud of the work that we've done, and we've been able to really provide a lot of support for our students. So we're seeing the power of BAR. Any questions? Yes.
I love this whole concept. I'm just curious, like, time-wise, how has that worked? Like, looking at the 68 students, that meeting, like, there's a classroom teacher there.
Yes.
When is that happening?
Yeah. So we, at our school, we do them on Wednesdays, mostly because with Pre-K not being in school for Wednesday, we're able to provide some coverage for the, for the classroom teacher to be able to come and meet with the team. I will say that BAR, when they came into their presentation, I thought that they were probably crazy, because they said that they give six minutes to present the student and to brainstorm and to come up with a goal and a plan and to move on. And I thought, there's no way. When we do our RTI meetings, we've been doing 20 minutes. And lo and behold, it is in fact possible. So we've gotten really efficient with being able to do that. And because there are very specific goals too, it's, we're able to chip away at things a little bit easier, so. Yeah, within an hour period, we're able to meet on five to six students each Wednesday, if we, if needed. Yeah.
This is a district program. So how do you, how is that coordinated in the district? And how do you kind of support each other?
Yeah, so this, obviously, this is the first year that the elementary schools have done this. And so of course, the middle school and high school have been very helpful of giving us like an overview of what it looks like there, but it's different at the elementary level. Well, I do, I will say that Lacey Rochiski has done a little bit of the coordination across the schools. So that has been helpful, so that she's able to see what it looks like at each of the buildings and report back some of the things that are working well in different buildings. And she has had a couple sessions where the school coordinators have been able to get together and have some conversations around what is working. I will say that I think the biggest help is that we do have a BAR coach through the grant that we have. And we do have the same coach at all three elementary schools. So she's really been able to answer questions, problem-solve with us, you know, specific to our building needs. And that's probably been like the biggest push for, for us.
Maybe this is your question. Now, the SEL dean, is that one of the extra funds?
It is on the extra funds, and it's not for one that we're not going to be able to continue to, what's the impact on a program like this?
We're fortunate that we do have a core leader in each building. We identified that. And then also working with our current SEL teams, be able to say, what is on your plate? And then who is going to take that when your position is in one part of, you know, district? Those conversations have started.
I'll also say that our grant has carried over for next year as well, so we will still have that coaching from from BAR. So it's a weekly coaching call that we have. And then they do foresight visits. So they come and they see us in action and give us feedback and next steps. So I, I think that the work will continue to be able to be moved forward even without that position. And they also do monthly, what do they call it?
Oh, PLC.
PLC, yeah. PLC webinars where everyone in the country that's doing BAR has access to it to do some problem-solving and some PD for us as well.
How do the students and the families of the students that are the subject of the block meetings, how do they experience this program? Because they're not attending the meetings.
Yeah, yeah. So the classroom teachers will reach out to the parents and let them know any of like the new interventions that are being put in place. You know, I know from a parent's standpoint, you know, at student life conferences, my daughter, we talked about, you know, this is one of the classroom interventions that were goals that we're doing. And so this is how you can help at home as well. So we are having conversations with, with the parents around it. And then certainly any of our Community Connect students, a lot of times we're reaching out with resources and whatnot. So, yeah.
Are there questions? And I would just say thank you. I know the amount, the commitment of time that it takes for a school to do this consistently. It's a hard commitment.
Good job.
Thank you.
Go to sleep, Kayla.
Thank you.
Moving on to our consensus agenda. And the first are meeting minutes Angela noticed when she was reading through the minutes that under new business, there are two votes. One of them shows that fourteen people are here. The one that approved the Minit Generator, it probably should say twelve and one instead of thirteen and one because there weren't fourteen members here. There are only twelve, only thirteen. But I would suggest that that would be part of the amendment, amended minutes. So it would be to approve the amended minutes, three eleven twenty-four. Notification support staff we hired, that's Rhonda Daffy, a bus driver for the district, and El Benson, and then Tech Two at PCS. Jerry Whalen, coach for Boyd Basketball Middle School, Jason Donovan, custodian at PCS. Stephanie Scott, literacy tutor for adult ed, Elizabeth Nelson, and then Tech Three at PCS. There are three resignation, Brian Whittier, a custodian at MCS. Chris O'Donnell, food service, Remina, executive junior. Rose Walker, fourth grade teacher at PCS at the end of the school year. And then there are subcommittee minutes for March twenty twenty-four for operations and personnel finance. And then there are minutes around the Friends Bar.
I'll make the motion approved. Do you have any adjustments?
Thank you. Second for Randy. Okay. Second for Mike. Randy, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question on the off committee. We, I think, Mary, you mentioned it initially, so I don't know if we have any open discussion. We talked about the PCS curtain, that side of issues and some potential different ways of getting along with the ground. That'd be put in there. It's come up a few times at this point, so.
John's not here. We had, is that in his report?
Well, I think he might call it. It came up because of what he handed us, but I feel like we have to talk about it in the open.
We should talk about polling.
I don't know what it was. I think it was something that we kind of brought up separate after looking at it.
So is that something that you'd like to have added to?
I would. I would have sent an email. I didn't get them back until.
Is that okay if we add that to your motions with Randy adding a statement in there about the discussion of operations? A statement around the discussion of the.
PCS gym curtain.
To the minutes of the operation.
It was exploring other.
I mean, I feel like we want a little deeper than that. Other things necessarily took a few minutes.
Can you say there was something about the primary names? Yes, just that the, under new business, the vote for the Minit Generator should have done like twelve-one, not thirteen-one. Thank you.
The comments scheme is a yes and a no.
So as long as you're all right, Stephen and Mike, with that motion, with approval of those two. Are there any other questions?
I have a question. On the hiring sheet, is that part of what we're? These are never filled out all the way. Like, the bottom is always blank. They're always checked out like full-time. And I'm thinking like the coaching positions, they're not full-time, like they're kind of seasonal. They're just always blank at the bottom. And I didn't know if we should update the form or if we can have this information. Whether they're eligible for benefits or not, that's always blank. You know, some of the stagnant positions, like, how long is that? Is that for next year or this year? We don't seem to be using our forms, I guess.
Or suggestion to either change the form or fill out the form completely?
Yeah, thank you.
Mary, I think that the way it should be, sorry, this is a little bit picky in the minutes, but the way that we vote on the generator, it shouldn't be thirteen, or twelve to one because Emily did abstain from voting. So it should, it should be twelve, zero. That's the way I would look at it is everyone who voted.
I think it was thirteen and zero because wasn't the other one, wait, was the other one? The other was twelve and one, right?
Yes.
So that means there was thirteen of us here. So it should have.
So it should be.
Twelve to one.
Should be twelve, zero.
Sure, twelve and, yeah.
Zero because
Yeah, I was also trying to understand.
And no one voted against the generator.
Twelve, zero, one?
Twelve, zero, one. Twelve, zero, one.
Twelve, zero, one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have a motion. Second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Stephanie Scott, I'm sure that means to think you.
Yes, yeah. Acceptance of financial summary. Stacy, first, we have here the approval of financials recommended by Personnel and Finance Subcommittee at their meeting on three twenty-five twenty-four. And those were in our packet. Are there any questions or Stacy on those? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve the financials. Second. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Next, we had a discussion around the expanded main paid family and medical EVAC. Employer employee share is recommended by the Personnel and Finance Subcommittee at their meeting on three twenty-five twenty-four. Stacy, do you want to explain that? And Stacy gave us some good explanation of that in our packet. It was the vote of the Personnel and Finance Committee for that to be a shared contribution. Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, this is a new law. The law's twenty-one pages. I have the full law. If anyone would like to read them, I did summarize them for you. Beginning January first, twenty twenty-five, all payroll will be taxed one percent. And that is going to be sent to the state. The law does allow for the employer to share that half with the employee. So each quarter, we will have a report to file to the state with the full payroll for that quarter. And we will have to pay one percent tax on that. But half of it can come out of the employee. So what that would look like would be each payroll check that the employee got, there'd be a new tax on it for half a percent of their wages. This will include all wages. It will include your stipends for your school board payments. It will be food service and adult ed and substitutes. Any kind of salary that we pay out through payroll will be taxed this one percent. This money is going to be collected by the state until May first, twenty twenty-six. So almost a year and a half, they're going to collect this money. And then it's going to be used to pay for leave that is expanded beyond what main and what federal leave allows for right now. So federal leave, if you have a sick parent or a sick child, or you're, you're pregnant, or you have an illness yourself, you're entitled to up to twelve weeks of family medical leave. It's not necessarily paid unless a collective bargaining agreement or contract that you have allows you to get paid for that time. This is going to offer leave beyond what federal and state currently offers. So when I went to the seminar with the lawyer, they explained it as the bestie rule because you could have a best friend. And my, my example that I like to use is Hawaii. And that person's very sick and you decide you're going to go take care of them. You could petition Maine for paid time to do that where your job necessarily might not offer that. The leave, if it qualifies under your job, would be concurrent. So if you use twelve weeks for this law and that same leave is qualified under your agreement, then you don't get more time. But if it's leave for your best friend in Hawaii and you're gone for six weeks, well, your contract at work doesn't cover you for that. So now you're still eligible for twelve weeks under your work time.
Explain, Stacy, how the collective bargaining contracts are different?
Yeah. So at first, we were told we had to take this out of everybody, all employees beginning in January twenty twenty-five. And when we calculated what that was going to be for our budget that we're building now for next year, it was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Then the law came out that any employee who is covered under a collective bargaining agreement, which is most of our employees, they will not be hit with this tax until their collective bargaining agreement expires and they start a new one. So now the amount right now that we have in the budget is down to twenty thousand. But you can see how much it would be if we are paying the full one percent as the employer. So that's where the discussion came in with the Finance Committee that their recommendation is to have the employer pay half and the employee pay half because if not, it's a big hit to our budget going forward. And the rate right now, the one percent, is only good until twenty twenty-seven. In twenty twenty-eight, they're going to reevaluate, they have a state, if they need more money in this fund to pay for leave. And at that point, it can change every year, like Medicare, Social Security, main state retirement, all those taxes that can change annually.
So a personal question, is just, just school employees or is the whole?
Statewide, every employee.
But you said also that it was, if businesses have five or less employees, it doesn't apply to them.
It's fifty-one. If an employer has fifty-one or fewer, they don't have to pay the half percent, but the employee does.
Still does.
Yes. A lot of this was started because some employers don't offer any leave at all. And so instead of the state making them pay like a worker's comp or an unemployment claim, they're just going to make all of us pay.
So you said when the contract, when the collective bargaining agreement expires, so at that point, is it up for debate what's going to happen or, like, what happens after that? And when is that?
I think that's what the state is implying, is that the groups that have collective bargaining agreements will negotiate how that's going to be handled in their contract. And that would be up to the negotiation committee.
So like, when we just got done negotiating, it would be another.
It'll be a discussion.
So the, the tech contract comes up in two years and the teacher in three, correct?
Yeah, the support staff is twenty twenty-six.
Or in year one of the tenure contract.
Right, it's a two-year contract, right. And that's, that's food service, ed techs, custodians, secretaries, administrative assistants. And then the teachers is the year after.
Now, it'll be a hundred and eighty thousand. And everybody in the state of Maine has to pay that one percent.
It's millions of dollars.
Yeah, millions, I guess.
And the law right now says that twenty-five million dollars will be transferred from the general fund unappropriated surplus at the state to this fund no later than six thirty twenty-four. There's a fifteen-member panel and they also are allowed to have support staff that this money will be funding.
They need vacation. This is hard work. And I think the other part that to consider is if someone is out, like they're going to take care of a friend on a state for six weeks, we now have to hire substitute teacher to send them to. So there's that additional cost there too.
How often can they get this leave?
That's the best part, Steve. We, we have no set. The employee actually sends a request to the state. And the state decides whether they get the leave or not. And the employer is notified by the state. They're not even notified by the employee. And this was in, this is in the law, the employee can apply for leave sixty days before it's needed or ninety days after it's been taken. So you could have an employee that's right at AWOL and you don't even know why. And then all of a sudden, you get from the state, oh, this person got their leave ninety days later. It's, it's crazy. It's the craziest law I've seen.
I just have a question. So it applies to all, like, everyone, but even if they offer leave?
Yes, all the leave that we offer. But there's some we don't.
These laws were not designed for school, school districts that offer.
Or small businesses.
Or small businesses that offer.
Right, a small business with maybe two employees.
So after the second meeting, I went and looked this up because we own a business and I was curious. And I did see that there was a provision for if it was going to cause significant hardship that you, it could be, like, or better, whatever, a better word than that, but you could say no if it was going to cause hardship. So in terms of us, like, needing to hire a substitute, like, I think it would be interesting to find out what constitutes hardship.
But how are they going to know? My question is, if the state is deciding, how are they going to know if it does or not?
I don't know. I don't remember where I read that, but I do.
And I think you're right. That might be for an employee or with two people, right? They need their employees at work. But I don't think, you know, we have three hundred and ninety employees. They're not going to think it's a hardship for one person to have. I don't think. But I don't know. That's, that's what that fifteen-member panel's.
Obviously, they don't think. It would never come up.
Exactly, Steve.
Steve's got a question.
Don't we all have an equal need to care for friends and family and servicemen returning from a war in Iraq or Afghanistan that may be damaged? Whether we're a fancy salary person pulling down a hundred thousand bucks a year or a lowly ed tech pulling in fifteen bucks an hour or a janitor making fifteen bucks an hour? Don't we all have an equal need to care for our friends and our family? And isn't it also true that those people taking leave get a princely sum of half their hourly wage when they go on leave? So the idea of them going to Hawaii, I'll leave to take care of a friend or family member is ridiculous. I could just as easily go to the moon and care for a relative who's coming back from Afghanistan.
We do have leave for relatives and family. This is, that was just an example the attorney used as far as how outreach the law was.
This is to cover people that don't have access to any of that. They don't have financial access.
I agree with you, Stephen. But, but their employers should be paying for it. That, that's the whole point. Shouldn't their employers be paying for their leave? Not employees that already offer all kinds of leave? And making every single one of us pay for the leave that an employee needs because their employer doesn't offer them any? That's the outrageous part of the law. It's not that people don't deserve it, but their employers should be paying it, not.
Not the whole state, which they're.
It's millions and millions of dollars that are collected.
The whole state pays.
Yeah, that's going right into the pockets.
Yes.
Yeah, we all have an equal need, just like we have need for roads, bridges, dams, libraries.
National parks, state parks.
The governor put it in her budget, is what I'm told. I told our state representative to find out more about this. And I was told it was buried in the back pages of the budget.
Now we got us.
Stacy, you're looking.
Stacy, can you clarify the timeline? It looks like these taxes start January 2025. Am I correct in that? I heard that they cannot collect the benefits until mid-2026?
May 1, 2026 is when people can start applying for benefits. So they're collecting.
That's something we'll have to take into consideration during the bargaining reevaluation process. Okay.
So Stacy, you're looking for the board to support the recommendation of the finance committee?
Which would be that the one percent be shared between the employee and the employer? Between us and our employee. A second? And a second? Any more questions or expressions?
Yeah, make that noted. We all ejected this time.
I do dress.
All those in favor?
Wow, I don't know if we're in favor.
I got a vote. This is half and half, right? Will we take, that's what we're voting on, half and half. In favor? Is there anybody opposed?
You're going to pay my half.
We had a couple, yeah, we had a couple.
I'm going to.
Should we revote?
In favor? Same?
Two each then? Could you send me a copy of the law?
Absolutely.
I'll take one. This is all around.
Right, the two. The last thing that we need to do is the most involved thing we need to do. We need everybody wide awake. Stacy, would you explain to us our next task? And why we're doing the task?
Okay. So a couple of board meetings ago, I mentioned to you that we would have the warrants to sign for the revolving renovation fund referendum at this meeting. So.
So can you explain again what that is?
Yes. So this is the vote that actually has to be taken. Do you have the vote, Mary?
I have it somewhere.
I have it right here.
All right. And this is the one that's related to the revolving renovation fund. And how much is that? That's 100 and?
It's $110,000.
For the ADA compliance issues at finance consolidator schools. So this is the official vote to be adopted by the school board by RFU 16, unit number 16 at the meeting on April 8th, 2024. Voted for warrant and notice of election of regional school unit 16 presented to the meeting be approved and then a referendum election for the RFU be asked for June 11th, 2024 for the purpose of approving the insurance of bonds or notes of the RFU for minor capital project purposes as described therein. Further voted that the notice of public hearing presented to the meeting be approved and that the public hearing on issuance of bonds or notes for minor capital project purposes be held on May 21st, 2024 at 6:00 PM as provided therein. A motion?
I won't. I won't repeat it.
And a second? We have a motion and a second. Are there questions or discussion around that?
I'm just wondering, aren't we missing information off this? Because don't we need to say what exactly we're asking to bond? Because there's nothing on here that even says that it's for scored. SRF 100 and K, what is?
It's a document that you have to sign. This is the notice of public hearing. And we're going to be able to have the public hearing the same night as the district budget meeting. So we don't have to have another meeting. So it will be from 6:00 to 6:30 and then the district budget meeting will be from 6:30 until whenever. So this explains that it is the interest-free revolving renovation fund for $110,000. And the state is paying 61.98 percent. We are only paying 38.2 percent back over five years. So the total amount we're paying back is $41,890. And it is $8,375 a year for five years. You'll see that in the budget on the debt service local owner line. That's actually the increase this year. If that is voted down at the referendum, then that amount will be taken off the budget. So this is the public hearing that you'll all sign. It's going to go around. We post this and then we have the warrant to sign.
So this isn't the wording though that's going to be on people's docket when they're voting, right? Or is it?
We have to post these. So when, when these get signed tonight, I have to go around town and post them. I have to bring them to each of the town offices. They have to post them. Just like we post when we do the warrant articles for the district budget meeting.
So what, what exactly when we go, is your question, Angela, when we go have a public hearing and we'll discuss it then, and then it will be as part of that referendum on the school budget and the town budget. So what will that look like as a question?
I have the questions back at the office. I didn't.
It's not what I just read. That's just the legal.
That's you voting to have the referendum and post the note and do the hearing.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. Cause I'm like, this is, nobody's going to vote for this. This is so vague.
You want to be here that 60-plus percent is being appealed by the state?
What do you mean? We just vote?
Just that, but just what this is, like what am I, you know?
That's why we have to have the hearing. We're required to have a hearing. And the reason why we have to do all this is because this is a bond through the bond bank. So we have to go through all the referendum processes and stuff, like we did last year.
So they, they would, when they vote, will have a specific amount and will know what we're paying and what all states pay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so any other questions?
Yeah. So I understand that we have to word things a certain way to be proper and it has to be posted and everything, but separately from that, on our Facebook or in our communications that you guys send out with all the great information, can we explain this better in our other channels that aren't as strict so that people understand what this is for? This is going to be posted with all the HVAC projects and stuff, that this is a small amount of money for one specific thing. If we don't do it, we're losing free money that we applied to receive. You know, so just can we explain this in a different communications channel?
And if we don't do it, I mean, we've acknowledged we have ADA compliance issues. The state acknowledges we have ADA compliance issues. And we don't do something about it, we set ourselves up in possible litigation.
And how do we?
We're going to have to do it.
And how do we try to tough those funds next year in the next round? If we don't use the farm real order.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the wording that I read. Any other? Any other questions? All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
So now you have to sign your name 45 times.
And it's the same way.
This is one of those things. Yeah, if you haven't done this yet, you're in for a big time. But it has to be on the same line on every document.
Do you need help with anything, Stacy?
Yeah, if you want to watch, you're under the table. We're going to start with Steve. He's going to sign the first line of every document. And then we'll go down.
Have it right down the line. I'm going to go stand for a minute.
I'm going to make sure we all sign.
He's going to sign everything. It's going to go down. So there's. We have to do that same order. So it's every other page.
If you have a?
Every other page.
Does he want to take this after he's been?
You want to go over there?
Yeah, can we just, I'm just worried.
I have that. I can see it on your face.
We did that once before. Let me go back to all this.
And we have a page.
We need a happy life.
These are the notices. And then when we get to the warrants.
Oh my gosh, Randy, don't mess it up. Yeah, Randy, 45. Are you staying still? Anybody have warrant for the eclipse today?
I mean, we did only have five hundred five, you know, people concerned that we can get over here.
Just five?
Some districts stayed late. Some districts, some districts didn't have school.
At all?
At all. Um, it's a little bit of a challenge.
Five. The same line as somebody else?
Speak those words over yours.
We're not getting paid the big bucks. Yeah. And believe me, somebody else pushes up and I hear them.
This is a great time to fill out a lollipop.
All right. So I'm going to say, Mary.
Y'all were actually right.
Is Stacy's, is Stacy his marriage?
This is for my wife. Yeah.
I'm going to drag this beat up the square block.
I'm very married.
I'm very married.
Never page.
Never did.
Never page. Oh, yes, it is.
This is one that Stacy seems to figure out how to handle.
Right.
Also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like, how old's your kid? Like, how old's your kid? Like, what grade are you in?
It's not.
I really like that information.
Wait, who, who were they going to? The teachers?
I invited, if you do have a staff member that's three, that's anyone that you appreciate.
I don't know.
No. Who you know. You know that?
Parents learn.
All right. Ready? All right. Off line every time.
Not every time.
Well, I mean, every time you get to this page.
Need a pen?
I don't put the paper what?
45.
I'm ready. Won't go right in the column.
Hey, tell me where I go with this one. Wait, do I still have to worry?
Good fall, my, my head's scratching.
Just a heads up, you'll have to do this again in May with the work.
I would, so maybe if it's a staff member.
Stacy, would you like to complete it?
Eight weeks, ten, one, two, three. He told for that. Once he's three, I told him by that. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine, zero, five, thirty. You always done that. We gain it, Stacy. Did I understand?
Getting tired, hands getting a little tired. But it's also hard. It's also hard in the top. It's also hard in the top. They've been, oh.
Yeah, because some of them. As fire.
I know, I'm slowing down. You want to be still and not problem solve.
Because this one looks a little bit different.
Have you got a B or C?
Yeah.
Oh, I understand.
Oh.
I thought it was just talking.
I made it.
Yeah, listen to the instruction probably. I'm just adding something, right?
At least in the last one, that's a good thing. If you're gonna forget, you should be the one to forget.
Did I miss something? Did it? I hit that up.
That's all.
Like I said, no.
Four seven application passed. We can leave it in this, we should have seven applications.
No, no, no. Some go back to the church, some go to the barn.
Put it on.
You wasn't from here? You're Mary?
Yeah.
Who's Curtis? I'm not trying to be cruel. Here, Randy. I'm gated.
Great. Is this it or not?
No, no. Yeah. Guinea pig. Right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's what I just started. Don't have another one. Is that the only one that you had at all? Yes. Oh, because you already signed the top one, right? I'll keep that one in house for me.
We're good, Randy. Good morning.
Oh, Warren. I think it's the end of January, so. Oh, they're not? They weren't. Yes. Oh, correction. You did this one? Yeah, yeah. Can you say stay? Really?
Ask the.
Ask the inspection.
That's one I'm looking for. Hey, I was looking at the last one. How you doing? No, no. Mike, I lay down when I dreamed. So now we're.
No. Amy, did you see me saying whatever I was gonna name Sam? I was like, I don't know if she knows who it is. You don't have to work on the tits. I know, you tell me that last year, you're like, I, I can just literally.
I'm trying. Yeah.
But she is, she's sweet, so.
Did it come out to forty-five months? It was probably everything.
Oh, okay, so we're going to. Yeah, so that's where the whole kids.
I'm gonna say it's okay.
Is this my last one? For you. Well, that was, I mean, I was starving.
I feel like that misses the spirit of the, uh, the year.
I did get a report for our most that said, does not always read. Yeah.
They surely all end up on the same line.
Yes, and I can't, is it first time in her?
Yeah, oh, I thought it was so.
Several. Okay, um, which school? Oh, just in general, yes. I will send it out, yes. Angela, who's your second? Yeah. Somewhere on there. The line. That wasn't that one.
You must be a lawyer or a doctor, one the other.
Is that?
You a lawyer or a doctor?
A nurse.
Nurse?
Yeah, an R and. You get used to scribble and then you just learn the language. That's awesome. It's just this.
Oh. I bet the druggist didn't accept that.
I don't know. Nowadays, everything's electronic. They don't even write scripts anymore.
Isn't that right? What do you want? Yeah. And what?
What's that?
What do you want?
I don't anymore. I got sacked because I ruined the vaccine.
Would you move if you wouldn't?
I wouldn't.
They take in the bath yet?
I don't want to go back. I've had offers, but I'm in a different place now. I mean, I can still fix you if you're broken.
I'm broke, right here.
We got meds for last week.
Yeah. Give me one that can go to sleep and I won't get up in the morning.
Oh, really? You sound like my girl.
Yeah, mine. Dark. I don't do that kind of nursing. Actually, there's a doctor. I know, I can't find most. But they were all. It's one of the, um, the one that I've been watching. The things they hang on to, especially behind. Yeah, and I have the last one right here. Sorry, too hot. I like it. I probably about. Oh, hey. Are we doing last one on mic? I know, you're doing good. I see her watching.
Oh, close my way. Ah, we're gaining. Comes the first guy in line to sign. We should have had a coffee break.
This is when you can fill out a lollipop. Yeah, fill out that one. We do all the coffee breaks. I'm a little scared.
Lost. We both agree with it, all of them? We give him a hand. Yeah, I'm gonna hit twenty-nine years. Did you just pack? A four-odd in. I'm gonna have to put one page, like fifteen more pages.
That's fun.
I saw it all.
Good job, Mike. I think that's it. All right, are we done, Stacy? Thank you very much.
We got beaten, as we got.
All right, we're, we can move on to our.
All right, we start with the budget presentation. Some of you have already seen, most of you probably have already seen this. I've showed it a couple times. It's information that we keep saying over and over again, just so people hear. So I'm gonna go through it. Um, thank you to Amy for the slides. Share this message. Uh, I'm gonna go through it as a streamlined version as quick as I can, not as quick as, well, yeah, as quick as I can tonight.
P D Q.
Um, so I'll go pretty quick. If you haven't seen this before and you have any questions, just raise your hand and I'll try to answer.
Is this the same one that you shared?
Same number of subjects.
So what community groups did you share?
Oh, um, this one, uh. We streamlined this one. Yeah, okay. The, the, uh, the groups that I met with, uh, along the way. All right, so this is the, um. The overview of why we're in the situation we're facing. There is a little additional information in here that, that I didn't have or that I wasn't sharing previously, whether it's something transfer. I want to share this information with you. Um, just, or, uh, you remember that this will be a budget of twenty-seven million, five hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, two hundred, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Was an increase of about one point seven million. It was seven, a six point five six budget increase last year. You know, this is just a slide to demonstrate the successes that we're having. This is a comparison of classes from two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three. Just gives you an overview of, uh, what our records are doing, once I leave, leave our group. This shows you the budget timeline. And I, I know I've referenced this one before from two thousand eight up to last year, two thousand twenty-four, where the budget that was approved was, as I said, about, you know, twenty, twenty-seven point four million dollar budget. Um, if you look at that increase, once in, I, I like to roll the twenty dollars in, over all those years, sixteen years to be exact. The increase, uh, is just about five point five million dollars, which is showing some pretty good fiscal responsibility on the behalf of the district and the, and the, and the board. Um. It's an average of three hundred forty-three thousand, well, three hundred forty-three thousand dollars a year. That's not a lot, and I think that's probably some of the reason why.
Why we're.
Where we are. So why, one of the factors that are determining or according us in the position we're in, this specifically at twenty-five, and we've said it's, it's. So why, one of the factors that they're determining or putting us in the position we're in, is specifically a twenty-five, and we've said it's, it's a difficult budget. It's a very difficult budget process. I know Mary's gonna talk about the budget committee meeting on Wednesday. Uh, this is what they have to tackle. We have a state subsidy, as you know, is decreased by three quarters of a million dollars. Uh, our valuation in the three towns went up a hundred and forty million dollars, which directly contributed to that decrease in, in, uh, the subsidy. Our economic disadvantage numbers decreased, which also contributes to the subsidy impact. We have a decrease in overall enrollment, again, a negative factor when it comes to state subsidy. Um, we had two students who were paying tuition and no longer are, so that number's down twenty-three K. Uh, and we were not awarded. You know, we sent out those, those applications. I did get, reached out to a neighboring district who was, uh, awarded several revolving renovation funds, so we have their application to look at. Uh, I'll leave it at that. Um, but we will be, we'll be chatting with them, and I had a meeting set up with, uh, E M C to review that with, uh, the social office staff. And, uh, because of the situation with all the last weekend happened, so that will be, will be rescheduled in that meeting. And then, as you're also aware, mostly probably, we had a one point five million carry forward in the last year, which we don't have this year. It's not guaranteed money. It's like, you know, the grants go away. You just can't guarantee that amount. So we are still carrying forward more than I'd like to see, but we've got one million in there, but that's the most we can, can put in. We don't, we can't go that well and bring that up anymore. So that is the most that we can, we can have, uh, as carry forward. Uh, the fund fix staff, you've heard that throughout, throughout the presentation. Um, as, as we look at this, the contractual services and benefit obligations, that's, uh, about one point one eight three, or is one point twenty-three million or more than that, uh, which is a nine point nine. If you remember Stacy had budgeted ten percent. We got a, a notification that it could, the highest level would be eleven point five, I believe is the number. Uh, we came in under what we'd budgeted ten percent, but to be honest, it was about savings of three to six thousand dollars. So it wasn't anything significant. It was under. Which is good. That was, you know, a little bit news that we got, but that's, that's, it didn't help us a lot. Um, we increased the SIP, the capital improvement plan, by four hundred thousand dollars. When John originally came in, he was looking at two million uncut to do all the work that needs to be done, that A E I have recommended. Um, we increased it by four hundred thousand, which is a six hundred thousand dollar amount, and it's something that's gonna have to be carried over from the end of the year. Um, and here you see the current budget as it is. This is what we'll go to the budget committee on Wednesday. Uh, our current budget stands at twenty-nine million, three hundred and seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Um, this is up. One million, nine hundred thirty thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars for a seven point zero five. Remember, I shared it earlier that last year was six point five six, okay? So we're, we're in the ballpark, but because of all those other factors I shared, the impact of the locals is gonna be more significant. Uh, this is to fund the budget, and, um, Amy is always urging me to thank those that done the work, the hard work, and there was a lot of hard work that was done. I appreciate her reminding me to do that, uh, the task force. And hours and hours generating very, very valuable data that the, that the board utilized and continues to be utilized by the strategic planning team, who is, uh, working really hard to provide that clear roadmap for the board and, and the district, as far as where we're gonna go, what, what we're gonna do. Um, I should put this slide up just so you that we have worked to bring this number down. When we started, we were at that twenty-nine, nine four nine, zero two seven number for an increase of nine point three one percent, which we knew was, I mean, we were talking an increase of the locals of twenty, thirty percent because of that change in subsidy. Uh, we knew that wouldn't fly. So we, we've worked hard and have to plug administrators, directors, supervisors, everyone that's been around the table, send all the central office people for working hard to get that number down where we got it. Uh, still not ideal, but it, it's what we really truly need to, this is what we have right now. It's to maintain. It's not to increase, it's to maintain. This is the capital improvement plan that, uh, John has spoke so much about, um, and, and we're very lucky to have him, um, with us because, um, he knows what needs to be done. He's done a head-to-head job already. Um, but we, we have to maintain that. We have to have settings that students can learn and students can teach. Uh, so that, that six hundred, as I said, back in March, first of March, his budget that he originally submitted was at one point eight. He's done a great job. In some cases, you required, requested that he do a good job decreasing that number because that is what the number would be. Uh, but before the numbers at six hundred is gonna be, it's gonna need to be maintained year after year after year. This is an important message that we have to share, um, that there are no costs, and, and a lot of people, you know, we just signed, you just signed something that people are gonna sign for a grant. They, they made this, that you, I think it was you, uh, that you said, how clear we make, make a clear message. They need to know that that is not, that is something separate from the C I P. Something that is also separate, which they may not understand, is the, the H V A. That is separate from the, the C I P. So they're, they're, they're two different things. Both necessary, but if we didn't pursue the master least burdens, that ten point two million would need to be absorbed into the vote. So that, that's just a message. If you want people to be confused, or you're asking me getting this, but then you're also asking for this. They're two separate things. Uh, I talked about how, how hard we've worked. Mary mentioned earlier, one of those positions, um, that you see on the S R. We have, I've said we haven't, at this point, we haven't cut anybody, and I've asked administrators not to bring any new positions to the table. But in essence, we're losing positions because those S R funded positions that you see in the box at the bottom, those were grant funded, and that grant has ended. To maintain those positions, it would have been an increase to the local budget. So by, by telling administrators not to bring new position requests, we are losing positions. In addition to the other positions that we, in other areas, we've already taken, reduced money from, either reduced it or not put it in, um, that this be a twenty-five budget, just to be fiscal responsible. The general fund and the C I P, this is what the numbers look like. This is your increase, the locals. They're big numbers. We'll work on this. This is what the, uh, Mary was talking about, Mary and Amy and I met today to, to talk about the meeting on Wednesday. Uh, and this is what people really want to see, is what will my, this is what people can relate to, um, more easily. How's it gonna impact me? So once we get those, and Stacy can calculate the numbers when we put, when we sent out information to the towns with that big number that I shared, they responded to us and gave us what those numbers mean. Now that Stacy has that formula, that, that information, she can now go through a calculator for whatever you change the budget to. Um, so we will have that, that information for the team on Wednesday. Uh, they'll meet Wednesday. They'll give us some guidance. Ideally, I'd like them to say yes, go through, go walk through the budget, but you know that how that process works. There'll be discussions. Um, and then when we come out of that meeting, we'll have, we'll be charged with something to do, and we will then follow up. We meet again on Wednesday fourth. The objective, or what we have to do is have a recommendation from that group to this group, um, by your main meeting, because we're on a pretty, pretty tight timeline. At the end of when, when, uh, the main meeting, your main board meeting, you'll have a recommendation from the committee.
Has Stacy already ran the numbers with this presented budget number, the twenty-nine?
I did it myself. They're big, I mean, they're, when you start one point three million dollars in the hole, the, the numbers are gonna be. It's gonna scare, it'll be scary. Anything to bring with that? Um, and a good point that we have to continue to make is that this isn't a one and done. Now, hopefully, we won't lose three quarters of a million dollars in subsidy next year, uh, but you never know with E two seven nine. Our numbers are declining. And by maintaining those small class sizes, um, you know, that, that has a cost. Uh, we were, again, when, when, um, hearing Amy and I meeting today, there are eight, there are eight areas on E two seven nine, we're over five of them. And that's because we value, and we provide for our students, and we value those small class sizes, and we value the supports that we have. Um, but again, that obviously doesn't take a chance. But it's not a one, it's not a one and done. You can see the things that are in it, the budget, budget increase, um, we've got those new salaries, contracts that have built into the budget, um, L R T C, shared with that, with, I shared with the, I don't know which, potentially with all of you, but L R T C is going to a per seat cost moving forward. Um, and I don't think anyone disagrees that L R T C is a very, very valuable, uh, component of what we offer our students. So, but that's a cost we're gonna incur. Um, what was mentioned, Stacy mentioned earlier, the, the medical E V act, that half of that one hundred ninety, that one hundred eighty is that, gets to that ninety-five K. Uh, we can't forget curriculum. The math program, our math, our math needs attention, as Amy's all over that, and we have a new, you know, metric, and we're gonna have to build it. Uh, the C I P, as I mentioned, is at twenty-five K, and then the NEES accreditation, that'd be a one, one-time deal with that, or one-time fee, that's the high school. That's the picture.
I, I think the only other driver that maybe we do, isn't a part of that, is that our town valuations are going up too. So what that says, our town valuations go up, this estate says that we're more capable, which of our communities, to give more local. Um, that's one of the other drivers. That's really the part of the subsidy driver is the state, the state and our towns.
I mean, we saw that big number for Poland. Poland alone's property valuation, one hundred three million dollars this year. So when you see that big number for Poland, it's a hundred forty total for the three towns, which is huge.
So they all get hit hardest on the tax rate, or their valuation is based, it's based on student count and valuation rate?
Those are the two, those are two of the things contributing to that.
Yeah.
They're all the back.
Wow.
First to your report?
Yeah, I got it.
You got all of your good news. If our budget should get voted down, then do we go back deduction of staff, or how would that work?
Back to budget process again.
We are. Amy shared a percentage that's something high eight percent is, is salaries and benefits. So if we get any kind of a direction from that committee to cut additional funds, the I C and I have already had some conversations. You, you really don't get, I mean, we got increases of a thousand dollars for supplies and two thousand for this. There, there's nothing really there.
Right, that, that is.
Sales.
Yeah. Oh, give it another, like, had a twenty percent increase next year.
The referendum that fails, what, what's the next step?
We'd have to go through the whole process again.
What?
You'd go through the whole process again. You would start operating under whatever the last budget that the board adopted.
Right, like, we'd work on this year's budget next year after it got voted down.
No, you'd work on whatever the last one was that the board approved.
Ooh. So that twenty, the high number you give us, that, what we would work on to.
But.
Even though the voters didn't like it, we'd be able to work on it?
They changed that. That's a number for you to start on. You'd have to go back through the whole pro, that's not the number. You couldn't just say, okay, that's, we're just gonna go with it. You have to go through the whole process again. You eventually get to, you have to get to a, a budget that the board's approved.
Yeah.
Um, you know, a neighboring district went through it, I think, four times recently to, to try to get a budget approved.
We did it three times, weren't we?
Okay, uh, so where's mine? Uh, I, I did the presentation that we talked about with, I, I got out to Poland. Today's on March nineteenth, and I did it with the, um, the parent group from Poland on the eighteenth. Um, people were very appreciative. The feedback I received, you know, even if it's not the best news you're delivering, people appreciate the new delivery. Um, so the, the feedback I, I didn't receive from, from the town managers and from those particular groups was as positive as it can be given message. Um, some events that happened recently, the, uh, Jess is sitting back there, the Beneath the Sea event at Elm Street was awesome on the twenty-seventh. I know Amy took a bunch of pictures. They had, I'll say full-sized whale, but they had a decent-sized whale, um, in the gymnasium. Uh, I did not go inside it, but you could. Um, so that, that was awesome, just seeing the kids with the, whoever they brought and parents, guardians, whoever. Um, there were just a lot of smiles and a lot of, uh, the, the staff just did an awesome job decking the place out and, and getting into character too well. Uh, so that was awesome. The, uh, middle school and high school had, had chorus and band concerts in March. I unfortunately think it was in those, but I believe you said you did.
I did.
So.
Exceptional.
They, they do a really good job. I mean, it's really started the elementary all along, working towards it, some new elementary music people as well. Um, school visits, I've been trying to get out in schools. It's, it's tough with all the stuff going on, but, uh, you know, I'm gonna have to get out and see and interact with staff. Uh, and I had just have to comment, I've said before, I have to compliment the students that we have. I find them to be very polite, um, and respectful, and the professional staff that we have. Um, it's just, it's, it's refreshing to see how, how they work with the students that they have. So it's, we have some really, really good people in this district, and that's why we're fighting, we're fighting for people to have. Uh, and then the breakfast meeting, we did have a breakfast meeting with the, uh, town managers. So, uh, we've been doing that, and I met with them. Again, just an opportunity to talk. We talked some shop, knocked some shop, but, you know, picking their brains. So what are your local budgets up? I'm gonna hit the number of percentages of that. So, you know, picking their brains for that. Um, and, you know, getting back.
Did they buy you breakfast?
No, I bought Stacy hers, though. This was a, a. No, we, we all buy our. And, uh, then you have the local ones.
Questions, Kirk? Good, move on to Amy, three, four.
All right, good evening, everyone. Hope you can change the, uh, feeling around a little bit in here. I can feel the air deflated out of here. Um, but we've got our three goal areas that I'll always start with, and that's our tier one instruction nets, instruction nets for all of our students, differentiated and accessible for all. Our social homeschool learning, uh, for both our students and our staff. Cable's implementation was a hot example of the structure we use in order to make sure we're talking about our students on a regular basis. And then professional learning, focus on retention. We've got professional learning is our three goal areas. Uh, one of the ones I just wanted to highlight is our work on math, and we do have a K six math leadership team that I've been talking about a little bit. And, uh, we, they are leading the work with a group of about fifteen to sixteen K six teachers, and we're trying to answer the question, is our program serving our student needs, our current student needs? And so we've had looked at data, we've looked at other programs, we've looked at the strengths and weaknesses of our program, got input from our, our staff. Uh, we are looking to try to increase the, or improve the cohesion of our curriculum, and, uh, during our P D time, we have, uh, met our math leadership team, has done two sessions to really sit down and talk with our teachers about, like, what are your hopes and dreams? Like, here we are, the ability to say, do we stay with our program, or do we look elsewhere, knowing that there's never gonna be any perfect program out there? But like, what's our dream, what's our dream vision for kids? So when they need their sixth grade experience, they have a really strong math background. And so we've talked about, like, what's that look like? What would you want your kids entering your grade to have, and what do you want them exiting, and then being able to lay that out, uh, K through seven is where we are hook right now. And then we're also tackling the math faculty plan, so math, that math faculty is being able to, uh, quickly and appropriately, uh, depending upon your age, uh, say, eight times six is forty-eight, so that is a real need of K through seven. So, uh, we're working on that. And, uh, you can see, Todd said that there's a potential for a math program. That's worst, worst-case scenario. We may end up electing to stay with our current program, but just maybe, uh, adding some more P D. And that's one of the, the, the key components that come up as we've had conversations is, you know, we put a lot into teaching us about how to teach, being like, one of the best practices, and, but we haven't done that math yet. So there's a real strong, uh, I would say, push in that area, like, how do we teach math? I got to go to the ecology school. Love going to the ecology school, and, uh, uh, do you remember going to the ecology school?
I do.
It did have a little bit of a snowstorm there and some rain and all that, so I did have my bob boots on. I was out in the puddles, uh, and just had a blast, being able to tromp through the woods with the kids, uh, and then also got to hang out on the basketball court during recreation time. Uh, number one, we're gonna have a really strong basketball. Uh, number one, we're gonna have a really strong basketball team. Holy moly, I was like, wow. Uh, and, but they're also just really, like, nice kids too, like, like, I don't know who I am, but like, just being able to joke around with me and then, but also watching on the, pick each other up off the ground, and like, give the ball, like, being able to play, because, I mean, there was a many boys on a very small basketball court, and I was very impressed that I did not have to interfere or, uh, referee very much. Uh, and also stayed for lunch, so had a great time being able to be part of that, that's, that, uh, the college of school for our sixth grade students in, uh, Saco, they were there for two nights and three days. I know that, uh, Caitlin and Jess both spent the nights there, uh, yeah. Always have fun with those, those kids, and that's when they're away from their families for the first time, living sort of in dorms, so I'm sure they have some good stories to tell. We do have our state testing coming up here in April, and that's the main through year. Uh, we also follow the N W E A, and that is a computer adaptive test for our kids in grades three through eight in second year of high school. Uh, it is an untimed test, but typical, a typical amount of time, sixty minutes to complete the reinforcement portion, sixty minutes to complete the math portion. With like anything else, it's one piece of the data puzzle, uh, my philosophy is to look at the whole child, we look at those information that comes from those, those bar meetings, we also look at classroom assessment data, we look at attendance data, we look at I ready data that, uh, many of our principals have talked about throughout the faculty system. Then we also do have a science test coming up, and that's for grades five, eight, and third year of, of, of high school. Uh, we also, as part of thinking about our professional learning and staff retention is, uh, our teachers do have a, a teacher evaluation, a pretty robust system, and one of those is a portfolio, and the point of the portfolio is to have evidence to share with their administrator or whoever is evaluating them in their evaluation year, and it's to be able to sort of, I call it these little nuggets that your principal doesn't know about, you're like, that way you can enhance the conversation and be like, you can actually talk about yourself or brag about yourself, uh, a little bit to your administrator, and, and the portfolio every year causes a lot of, of anxiousness, as you can imagine, uh, and so we, we do portfolio study halls, and so Katie Two Baker's been fantastic, we're facilitating that, and we supporting her, and just coming and saying, hey, here's a work plan for you, here are some examples, here are some thoughts and ideas you can use, get some feedback from the people that are there, so it's, it's a really good meet that number one, have teachers, I love it when our teachers from across all of our schools can be together and get advice from one another, and we know that they, they know different colleagues from different buildings, so I do want to thank Katie for that. Um, and then we do have our final new to RSU sixteen cohort planning, we meet with our new to RSU sixteen teachers three times a year, D R C is on that team with, with us, and, uh, so we're looking at potential holding that at home provisions for art labs on the upstairs rooms, that way we can have some casual conversations, but also some focused ones too, so we're designing our, our questions, like, what were your successes this year, what could you go back and tell yourself, how would students describe you, so some, some sort of fun questions to have together. And then also then, super busy with grants, we, you know, we have a variety of grants going on right now, we have the Preventing Homeless Grant, and that is for us to be able to use to help with paying for, uh, heating fuel, electricity, and, um, uh, housing costs to, or to prevent homelessness of, of, of families in our district. We do have the literacy grant, and that's been, uh, kicked off with the two major trainees of, of teaching literacy, and that's our letters program, which is like a, a, a huge course on teaching the science of reading, and our teachers are, are bugging away at that. And then we also have our special ed department participating in Fort and Willingham, which is another program specifically designed for, for special education, so that is given in the way. Uh, I've been working on the F C performance report that's due, how the D O A did say that you should plan to spend a hundred and forty hours, a hundred and forty hours on that. Uh, I've got Stacy, so I would have knocked that down, so maybe twenty hours, but we're pretty, we're close to getting that performance report finished. Um, and then working on the McKinney mentor, who we've seen in Jenny's, um, uh, reports that she, we are, we have it this year, and most schools are, and getting together all of our evidence to support that we've met the criteria for McKinney mentors, it's a big one. And then my final piece is just updating you on the strategic plan, uh, our strategic planning team, we have spent, uh, many meetings, five meetings really broadening our views, because one of the pieces is we all bring perspective, where we bring our own biases into, uh, group work, and being able to, uh, widen your lens to see that there may be more than what we have, I started with, and so we are getting into now the writing of the potential language for our strategic plan. We have four action groups, we have a, a, a small group that's for rewriting the mission or looking at our mission statement, one that Mary reads at the beginning of every board meeting, or a little bit of an upgrade to that. And then as you can probably guess, the, the, uh, action groups are, we have an operations and resource group, as you can imagine, uh, we have an education, and then we have a community group, and then we do kind of have the staff retention off to the side right now, a little circle back around to those. And so last, uh, last meeting, we really wanted to define a problem and practice in each one of those, so we can clearly state, this is the problem, the strategic plan is trying to solve, and then evidence to support that, and you know, by now, I do like to say, uh, like, if there's always maybe some of this, we'll highly know that this is a problem, is it just, you think it's a problem, or where is it in all of our data that shows that this is a problem, and then ideas to be able to solve that, that you go into a strategic plan. So that is, that is a little bit more on the table. With the good people we have.
Thank you, Amy. All right, let's, um, move on to new business, and I'll let Jess talk about our new fourth grade teacher that you're bringing forward to her nomination?
Yeah, her name is Carolyn, she's, uh, going to be graduating from the University of Maine or no, um, it's kind of promising to be able to advertise a little bit early and to have, you know, four solid candidates, but it's, it's a good sign that we'll hopefully be able to secure some more great candidates for the district as well. She's, uh, really enthusiastic, Todd and I met with her this morning, um, I think what impressed the interview committee the most was just her questions at the end, you know, she really had some awesome questions for us about our school, our students, our community, she's local to Lewiston, she's grown up in a family that values education, and she's wanted to be a teacher since she was in kindergarten, so we are excited to be able to make that happen for her, uh, I think she's gonna be a really good fit for our team, so.
So that's Carolyn, luck here?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to support the nomination of Carolyn, luck here. That's a fourth grade teacher at Elm Street, second, okay, motion is second, any questions? All those in favor? You wanna pose, that's unanimous? Thank you, Jess, thank you for hanging around.
Yes, no, thank you. Don't take it personally if I leave.
All right, let's move on to our report of our representative.
Um, so, some more uplifting things this Friday coming up, we have Wellness Day, um, where the high school really values social emotional learning, so we have, um, no real classes that day, but it's split into morning activities with your homeroom, um, and then we'll have a pep rally, where we'll play some fun games in the school, and then we'll break off, um, into different categories that you can sign up for, so, um, some social things would be, I don't know, making cards or something, emotional could be what you can do, like yoga or sensational salads, which also isn't physical, um, and then there's just like a ton of team sports games and how to improve your athletic performance. Uh, we have a whole list of such great things, um, for all students to be offered for that day. Uh, spring sports have started, the boys lacrosse team, um, with our contract with Gray has seventy boys total, not from Poland, but like combined seventy boys, which I think is the highest in all sports, that, so they actually had to have three teams, sadly, the girls program is not thriving as much, um, there, I'm the only girl from Poland that plays lacrosse, and we don't have enough for J V teams, that it's kind of hard to have like, new girls joining, and they hit the varsity field running, it's, I, I have always been somebody who started on varsity since freshman year, and I kind of wish I was given the opportunity to play like, on a field without being pressured on a varsity level, but, I mean, I do also acknowledge that I am just athletically talented. The senior fundraiser just happened, where the senior class delivered about six thousand eggs to the community, and they made a pretty good profit, but some feedback was that they definitely could have charged more.
Yes.
Um, so next year, I think, when my class takes that on, we'll probably charge more when we do that.
Except for school board members, we get a discount.
LRTC letters should be coming in, uh, within the next week or so about acceptances, so I'm really excited about that, I've been waiting a very long time. So we also had some really good feedback from the N E S C group, I don't know how familiar you guys are with that accreditation process, so they all came into our classrooms and just, it was a two day thing where they bet in the conference room, they were out in the hallways talking to students. I got a short report while I was in student council, I didn't really hear much about anything too negative, but they said they would make a really deep report, um, but they really like our student government and our student voices, especially student representative on school board, um, and the way that our students kind of not run the school, but they're a big part of, um, our decision making, especially vision keepers, um, and the way that we hold our student council meetings, um, and our roundtable, they also really like that structured time, because most schools only have it once a week, but we have roundtable every single day, so that is also something I like. Um, prom, we're still going strong, um, May fourth is coming up, uh, we need more students to sign up to help at least on that day, we have everything kind of set, um, theme's rustic romance, it's gonna be at Agassi Village, they gave us a discounted price, they normally pay, they normally make people pay like four thousand dollars, they're gonna make us pay fifteen hundred, so we're probably gonna give them money back after too, we're gonna donate some. Just from my policy committee, I'm pushing back my work on, um, the voting process and the four titles of representatives, just because it's something that I can do as a whole S R B next year, um, but I would like to propose some new ideas for open campus, um, which would be a grade based policy about whether students can leave the school, given the opportunity that they have a second or third block, sort of academic support, so they're not sitting there doing nothing, or lunchtime, they can go out and come back. And then also grade based junior privileges, because, um, I know as a junior, I have a first block, I get my support, and it gets really boring to have my dad call me out every morning, it would also improve our tardy statistics by a lot, um, because juniors often also have first or fourth block, so there would probably be a decrease there and as, there'd be an attendance effect. That's about it that I have, we have break coming up, and everybody's really excited about that, hopefully sports will get to be out on the field regardless of conditions, I know that, uh, I have our first scrimmage tomorrow, um, and it was gonna be at Gray, but the field is not ready, so we moved it to Lewiston where they have some turf, so we're looking forward to that. Any questions?
When you propose the, uh, junior privileges for first and fourth, fourth block, make sure you mention, uh, decreasing administration costs.
Yes. You got it.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your detailed report.
Yeah, very thoughtful, appreciate it, thanks.
Steve actually went to Augusta on the school board day at State House, so he's just gonna give us a, a little bit of an update, he did give us a report on our desk, our people, so. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so last week, uh, twenty five or more of us school board members from around the state, uh, went to Augusta, and we descended on our core governor. The intent was to ask her for help. That's good news, bad news, I don't think we quite succeeded, I think, uh, uh, Governor Mills left our group a bit puzzled about why we showed up, but, um, uh, we'll get better. Uh, good news, this is a practice session, we'll get better at advocating for our schools, and we'll get better being the education system, about our education system, and I've, um, sent an email to our own Senator Bennett, who is one of our representatives from our district, and he's, uh, on the budget committee. So, um, I hope for some, uh, good results, and I don't see the harm in sending an email to our core governor, leaving her in no doubt about why twenty five or more school board members went to Augusta this year, and maybe, uh, Representative Boyer also, I don't see the harm in sending him an email about, uh, our financial challenges, not just RSU sixteen, lots of schools all around the state, man, they're, they're hurt, so, um, bottom line, if you don't ask, the answer's always no. I do solemnly promise to be the sole protector of the home state, in my emails, and before.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, I didn't know you had. Yeah, sorry about that, how many of us are there?
Fifty. It's okay.
Oh. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that. Uh, just budget committee, Todd did a, a good job with, with that update, uh, we are meeting all day on, on Wednesday, and the people on the, the board that are representing, I'm on that committee, but, so it's Andrea, and Angela, Jess, and Mike, and, and Emily, um, and then Todd, Amy, and Stacy, and our town representatives, there's one from each town, so S R A is on for mine at Pollo Stotz from McHenry Falls, and Mary Ann Hox for Poland, so, um, it's a representative committee of people from different perspectives, and it's intentionally that so that, um, we can work through this together, because as you can see, it's, it's gonna be, uh, not an easy task, and every year we start out with challenges, but this year it's, they're, they're even bigger challenges, but, you know, what we need to do as we work through it is, what we tried to do tonight is also to focus some on the positives that are happening, because there are, there are many, many positives for us to, to focus on, and try not to get stuck in the doom and gloom, so. But I do want to thank our administrators and our directors, I was, they've been working on this budget since early in December, November, December, um, and have put a lot of work and had some difficult conversations, so certainly appreciate all the work that has been done on, on behalf, on behalf of our community and our students, so thank you for that. That's pretty much what I have, so, uh, anything on eighteen reports, any comments on that? Again, I thank the administrators for that, uh, there was lots of highlighting and celebrating positive things in that, um, and again, finding numerous activities and things to bring community into school, and I know they talked about career days, and reel outs, parent conferences, uh, family dances, family nights, concerts, so lots of ways, and, and Amy mentioned on the strategic plan, on the committee that's working on the community piece of it, and, you know, those are, are some of the things we talked about the other night, is what are the ways that we can bring our community into the school in positive ways, and certainly by reading through our, our eighteen reports, there are many, many examples of that, we just, we find some ways to continue to get that, that good news out there. So we have two executive sessions, um, and so we'll have to go into one, view our business, come out, uh, if there's any actions that need to be taken, we'll take it, and then go into the other one. So do I have a motion?
Well, we'll.
Let me read this, enter into executive session regarding personnel issues pursuant under one M R S four oh five six A.
So.
And a second, this is from Melanie, no executive motion, and a second.
Bye, Emma.
All of you in favor? Thank you, thanks everyone, thank you, Emma.
For information, the high school doors lock at seven P M.
Yeah, I see, I think you could be all right, right, but I didn't.
No worries.
We appreciate it.
What I signed up for, but, thank you very much, so very informative.
The lock in Chicago.